Welcome to the Planning Board meeting, Thursday, March 2, 2023. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual scheduled meetings to the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, Union County Hawk, and Tappan to Clark, by posting such annual meeting schedule on the Bulletin Board in Town Hall reserved for such announcements, and by the proper filing of said notice with the township clerk. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider, and reaching a decision in decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. I'll take attendance. Mayor Bonner Corso. Mr. Alrick.
Here.
Councilman Menini. Mr. Koch.
Here.
Mr. Triola.
Here.
Mr. Altman.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Steinberg.
Here.
Mr. Cle.
Yeah.
Okay. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the February 2, 2023 meeting? Are there any comments or discussion on those? If not, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd also have a motion to dispense with the reading of correspondence. All correspondence is available at Town Hall for the public to review and read. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike and Mike. First order business site plan application, Samsell Shorelife LLC, 1124 and 1126 Raritan Road, Block 60, Lot 53. Counselor?
My name is Michael Bonner, appearing on behalf of the applicant from Javabam Morgaff. Green light's on. Am I too far away? Is that better? You got my name right. We're here for preliminary and final site plan approval. One new bulk variance is being requested for the number of parking spaces. There are two existing bulk variances which we are requesting be continued. They're related to the size and shape of the property, and there's one design waiver. Property is located in the CN Neighborhood Service Commercial Zone. It's a permitted use, and the applicant is here tonight. He'll describe the business and the project. Briefly, the improvements include constructing a two-story addition and a 280-square-foot addition to the footprint on the first floor, and a new second floor of 1,236 plus or minus square feet. There'll be two new offices on the second floor. Mr. Samsell will describe the type of tenants he's looking for. Essentially, they can be described as low-impact. And there will be other site improvements, including reconfiguring the onsite parking, upgraded landscaping and lighting. I'll acknowledge receipt of all the municipal reports, and our professionals will cover the relevant issues as they go through their testimony. So for now, I'd like to introduce John Samsell. He is principal of the applicant, Samsell Shorelife, and he will give you... He'll give you a brief summary of the project and the site.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is John Samsell.
Excuse me. Let me just where you end. Before we begin, Mr. Chair, I have looked at the notice, and I find that the board has jurisdiction to hear this application. Please state your name and spell it.
John Samsell, S-A-M-S-E-L.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, John Samsell.
Disobviously swear.
Disobviously swear.
That I will tell the truth.
Tell the truth.
And the whole truth.
And the whole truth.
In these proceedings.
In these proceedings.
Thank you.
Mr. Samsell is appearing as a factual witness. Why don't you just explain your position, what your relationship is with Samsell Shorelife, and your duties and responsibilities?
Thank you. John Samsell, owner of Samsell and Associates Real Estate Services, located in Clark, New Jersey for a little over five years now. We had purchased 1124-26 Raritan Road about a year and a half ago. That has been a real estate office since 1963. And at that time, we thought it was a great opportunity to carry the legacy, perfect place for us to move our agency as well to Raritan Road. We were on Washington Street in Clark for years before that. At that time, during the time, we thought it would be a great thing to put an addition on our building, to bring a little extra source of revenue.
Just to clarify, you're also the principal owner of the applicant, Samsell Shorelife.
Correct. I'm the principal.
And they're affiliated companies, correct?
They are affiliated companies.
Thank you.
Correct. And so what I wanted to do is put an addition on the building to bring in some source of extra revenue, along with making the street scrape a lot nicer for Raritan Road to keep up with the differences and changes that we had on Raritan Road over the years. We're looking for basically low-impact business above me, and being in real estate, I know that we're not going to have swarms of people wanting to rent a second-floor place with very minimal parking. And plus, I'm going to be downstairs and don't want to have a ton of people upstairs. You know, so certain days, we do have one full-time employee, one part-time employee, myself as well. We do have agents that come and go throughout the day. Once in a while, we do have meetings at the facility during the lunch break meetings, and will sometimes have five or six people in the facility at that time, but they come and go. The constants are myself, one full-time, and then three days a week of part-time. That is the main constants of the building. And as I said before, we're not looking to, you know, have a building full of people on Raritan Road with the minimal parking we have. My discretion is going to be in the town's discretion as well for zoning. When I go for an application for somebody upstairs, I'm sure that's... One of the questions is how many spaces they're going to need and so forth. You know, I'm just trying to make the street look nicer. I try to develop the town to be a nicer place as well. It's an older building. I did clean it up a lot since we hadn't moved in. It was covered with trees and bushes and things to that nature occurring. So we did some renovations outside and inside to make it look nicer for now, but we really like to afford the opportunity to make a little extra income with the building that we did purchase, to carry on the legacy of a real estate office, and so I can hand it down to my family as well in the future. And I know we have a parking-issue variance that we're asking for, and I'm going to ask for leniency on that. I will do my best to keep all our cars on our lot by when I do rent the top, make sure they have minimal traffic, something like ourselves, one to two or three people tops. And, you know, any questions for me?
Your business is hours of operation?
Basically, nine to five are the full-timers. People do come and go.
Monday to Friday?
Monday through Friday. Saturday and Sunday were closed technically, but people come and go once in a while, agents.
And the tenants that you'll be looking to rent to will be similar, right? Nine-to-five type businesses?
Correct.
Not businesses at night, not excessive parking?
Correct. Exactly that, because I don't... Once again, business hours are the most important thing if somebody upstairs for me. That way, we lessen the impact of cars.
What kind of deliveries do you get on a kind of a weekly basis?
We get FedEx and UPS. They usually just come and deliver checks and mails.
How often?
Couple times a week.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Samsell. You used the phrase "low-impact tenants." Can you describe what they possibly could be?
Single-person architect. My friend has Roto-Rooter in his building. The beautiful thing about them is they don't actually go there. They just use it for an physical address for mail. They don't even bring trucks there. So I was like, that's a really good tenant, somebody that really doesn't show up. They just need a space. That's another option we're going to look for, is people that don't really need an actual office to attend, but they need an address instead of... Because some places require them to have a physical address, even though they don't need an office, but to be a part of a business, they have to. So that's another option. And I'm going to be real selective, and I know the community's here, and if the community wanted, I would work with them to determine who would be a best fit for this building. Not looking to harm anybody, just looking to help and make the street look a lot nicer and also produce a little bit of income for the investment I do have.
Is your office open weekends also?
We're technically not open Saturdays and Sundays, but agents do come and go, so they can... A lot of times, they'll come in, do something, leave. Some agents will come at night, do something, leave. It isn't like the agents sit there all day and night. I'm there a lot, my office manager, and then we have a part-timer that's there three days a week. So it's a lot of come and go, you know? And sometimes we'll have five or six people there, and that will usually be for a meeting. And that meeting lasts an hour to two, and then everybody disperses.
Would you say most of the time, the agents meet their clients at your office or right at the houses?
Very few meet them at the office. One tonight did meet at the office, but not rarely. Most of the time, you're going to the client's home. We do more listings, not a lot of showing of homes, so we usually have to go to the person's home anyway to see what it looks like, to list it and get the paperwork signed. But tonight, one did come in.
Your office operation would counter with the neighborhood. People would be at work, and you're at work.
Exactly. And that's one thing that's important to me, too. Like, I try to keep our hours minimal, so if we do end up... Anybody has to, by chance, park on the street, that it's during work hours when people normally aren't home and there aren't people in the neighborhood.
Anyone else on the board have questions?
When you have your meetings, you say you have larger groups in. Where is the spilling over of the cars going?
We really haven't had any. I actually... So technically, the size of a space by code has to be so many feet, but technically, I could fit a lot more cars in my lot than technical code stands for. So an average space has to be sixteen feet by eight feet or so, but, right?
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eight. So eighteen. So what happens is, by that rule, okay, you only can fit so many spaces legally, but technically, I'll be honest with you, I can fit a lot more cars than that on my lot. So they haven't really had any spillover as that I know of.
You haven't used Terry Lane?
I have not used Terry Lane. Now, I am under no awareness, and none of my people have ever used Terry Lane, but if they can answer that, maybe if anybody's seen anybody on Terry Lane parked. No, right?
They can... They'll have a chance, I believe.
Yeah. So right now, no whatsoever.
No further questions? Thank you.
Nobody?
Okay. Anybody from the public would like to come up and ask questions about the testimony we just heard, solely the testimony we just heard? There'll be a time at the end of the meeting that we can have any questions, but coming forward, please name your... Please name... Write your name, state your address.
Good evening. Kevin White, 3 Myra Place, Clark, New Jersey. I resided on Myra Place for approximately 35 years. I served in the Township of Clark as a police officer for 30 years. I just wanted to give you a little history of our neighborhood first. It was predominantly older people when I first moved in, and now the neighborhood has exploded with very young people that have kids, a lot of kids in the neighborhood. I would say just on Terry Lane, there's probably about close to 12 or 13 kids that live on that street. It's a very short street. Raritan Road is a very busy, busy county road. Speed limit's 35 miles an hour. When you come off Raritan Road onto Terry Lane, there's a stop sign at the end, and as you come off Raritan Road, on the left-hand side is the gentleman's property. It's an open driveway for approximately maybe 40 or 50 feet. On the other side of Terry Lane is a gentleman that owns a accounting firm who's pretty busy this time of year, and we get parking on the right side of the road when you come off Raritan Road. And two cars cannot pass on Terry Lane, one coming in, one coming out. You have to wait. And the gentleman's property, like he said, a year ago, it was owned by a gentleman from Clark, I think it was Evening Realty, and the gentleman, I guess, sold it to him, and there was only one or two cars that used to park in the parking lot when Evening Realty was there, so it wasn't really bad. When the gentleman moved in, the... There were two school buses that were parked in his parking lot for probably about two weeks. Then all of a sudden, this dumpster shows up on the Terry Lane side of the parking lot, and I thought by township ordinance that anytime you had a dumpster of that size, it would have to be placed in a corner-off area. It's just open. The gentleman wants to add on to the left side of the building, which is the west side of the building, and my concern is, where's the water going to go? We have the grass area there, and he has downspouts. So when he adds the second floor on, it's going to be a bigger roof. There's more water that's going to be coming off of that roof, and the downspouts basically right now either run into his parking lot or run into the grass area there. At the intersection of Terry and Raritan Road...
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting you, but this is to ask questions of this particular witness. There will be a second opportunity to make as detailed a statement as you wished.
Okay.
And for example, the engineer is going to be testifying as to water runoff.
Okay.
So if you have a question for this...
I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't want to interrupt you, so I apologize for interrupting you, but I think you'd want to limit your questions to him.
My question is... One of my questions is, I mean, the garbage receptacle is an eyesort of us now. I mean, where's it going to go? I understand that, like, I don't know what time they picked that up in the morning, but it's going to impact at least three, four houses of people that live in that area and have kids.
I can answer that for you. We actually had the neighbor, Chris, reach out to me a couple weeks ago about the dumpster about they were picking up really early in the morning. It's a three-yard container, and it's only office debris and household stuff like that, and we called the dumpster company and let them know, and then I asked Chris, what time should they come? And he said anytime after 6:30. That was one of our neighbors, and we complied right away with that. I did not know that it needed to be enclosed there. What we'll be doing, though, with the addition going on, with the work, we're going to put a nice fence along the neighbor behind me. I wish he could have came tonight. He stopped by the other day. And the dumpster's actually going to get pushed back further, so it won't be sticking out where it is now. It'll be back towards behind the building, because all that grass on the right side will be pavement, and we'll get that dumpster back far enough where no one will see it. We're going to run a shrub line, too, on both sides of the property, one for absorbance of water and two for decoration as well, so it looks much nicer in the neighborhood.
With that dumpster being put back behind the building, what is the distance between the back of that building, where the dumpster's going to be, and the person's house on the First house on the left-hand side behind yours?
Yeah, he's fine.
These might be more appropriate questions for the architect when he testifies about the site plan?
He's fine with that dumpster there. He's...
My next question is, you know, we had a very minimal snowstorm the other day, and when we came out Terry Lane, the snow was pushed onto the eastern side of Terry Lane. I mean, why is the snow being taken off your property and put onto Terry Lane?
I'll talk with the plow company about that. I will. And I will always address anything that comes up.
Okay. All right. I'll be back up. I'm sorry that I spoke out of turn.
At the end, you'll have time to come back and ask any question you'd like. Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward and ask questions of the testimony we just heard? Please come forward, state name and address.
I'm a resident of Terry Lane. I just have a... Mike Savino, I'm a resident of Terry Lane. I just have a question. What guarantees do we have that it's going to be low-impact businesses and the parking and through-traffic? As mentioned, there's a lot of kids that play. They're accustomed to not worrying about any other cars coming down Terry Lane.
I totally understand. I have small children as well, and as I talked to you guys earlier, I will do my best. There's no guarantees in life with anything, and we all know that. But what I can tell you, I can do is my best to work closely with the community, close with the neighbors. I know, listen, I've... Since I moved in, I sent out cards to everybody. I sent out Christmas cards. I sent out all letters to everybody, so it's one thing I will do, is help and work closely with the community.
And we appreciate... We're not against your business.
Yeah.
We're only about the traffic and through-traffic and parking. We did like those trees, though. They provided a lot of shade, a lot of privacy.
I'm going to put nice new stuff up for you.
And if I could also state, at the end of the hearing, as was explained, you all have the opportunity to make statements. If the board sees fit, they can put conditions into the resolution regarding hours of operation.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they can restrict the actual tenants other than...
They can for zoning reasons.
But I think what you have to take in, what we hope you take into account, is that he's going to be operating his business there. He's in the real estate business. You're not going to find a Chick-fil-A interested in renting upstairs.
Fair. We understand that.
It's not a site... Sorry. It's not a site that is conducive to anything other than an office-type use with...
Mr. Bonner, you're testifying now.
I'm sorry.
And so if there's an answer from a witness, that would be fine. If the answer's going to be given later on by another witness, that's fine, but let's focus in on testimony right now.
Okay. Right. We... Guarantee that you say doesn't exist exists right now, that there is no parking. So to take that guarantee away, now there's no guarantee, and that's our concern. We just feel like we don't want to get into these hypothetical situations where low-impact tenants, this and that, and we all go, oh, yes, this sounds good, and then we get into a situation where we come home and there's just cars everywhere, and who do we complain to?
They'll come right to me.
Who do we complain to? We like you. We have nothing against you, and I don't like that we're in this situation, but here we are.
I can share a little experience. We have houses in Clark, and our family lives by the waterfall, and everybody that goes to the waterfall in the park, you know where they park? All up and down our streets, and there's nothing we can do, unfortunately, people visiting the park. But, and it's... We have driveways, thankfully, and we can park in our driveways, and that's the best I can do. Listen, I don't want to harm our neighborhood. I want to enhance our neighborhood. I want to enhance Raritan Road. I want to enhance the building. I want to help the neighbors. I always invite everybody over all the time, and my door is open to everybody all the time. A few of the neighbors stop by and see me. They always come in. Mail people come in, anybody. We're welcome.
We appreciate that. That's our concern. No further questions.
Thank you.
Mike Savino, S-A-V-I-N-O, 17 Terry Lane. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward? Seeing no one, I'd like a motion to close.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. Second by Mike. Counselor?
Hi. Do you have one question?
This is for his testimony?
I'm sorry?
This is for his testimony?
Yes.
I have a motion to open up the public.
I have a motion.
Mike and Mike, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we had...
Yes.
Yes, you can go.
Yes.
Yes.
Regarding the businesses... Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Elizabeth Savino, and I live at 17 Terry Lane. Regarding the businesses that you intend to rent out to, I understand that currently your business is nine-to-five during the weekday. How about those businesses that you intend to go there? Are they also going to be during a weekday, or will it be weekends as well?
What I will do for the community is, when I'm interviewing people to rent the space upstairs, I will make sure their hours of operation align with our hours of operation, and if they're not, I don't need the money that bad. I need the neighborhood behind me. That's the most important thing to me. I'm a very community-oriented person that does a ton of stuff in Clark and multiple communities around me, so the most important thing about us is community before profits, and that's what we live by in our company. And if you do a little bit of research on us, you'll see what we really do in the surrounding area and through New Jersey and other countries as well. We're big supporters of people, of schools, of police, of fire, of everything that you could imagine. We're there for them. When there's a need, we show up 100%. And that's something I want to show you guys in the community. That's why I always send cards to all the houses in the neighborhood to introduce us, to invite yous over to see us and meet us, and I've done that since day one, and I'll continue to do that today and on the future. And if you like a say in who we rent to, I will give it to you.
Okay.
And that is the honest truth.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Cruz?
I was just about to ask if there's something we could do about limiting hours?
Yes. Mr. Bonner, would you accept as a condition that the hours of operation of the principal business downstairs and any tenant would be from nine to five, Monday through Friday?
Yes, I don't have a problem with that, but our downstairs, we do have agents that come and go different hours, but that's usually one person. They come in the office, do some work. Sometimes they're there late.
I think if you describe it as open to the public from nine to five, I think that's probably acceptable, but, you know, sometimes people might work late, but it wouldn't be open to the public.
Yeah, like one person be in the office doing something. That's what does occur now. One person... Sometimes there's people in my office, one person there at 10 o'clock at night, because it's quiet there and they can do their work. But I can definitely keep hours of operations to nine to five for open to the public for tenants above, and I would also... Listen, I'm okay with going to the community and asking them what they think. I really am. That's the kind of person I am. That's what I do in life. I'm a community-oriented person, so I don't mind the community having a say in anything I do with this.
And open to the public would include meetings?
Correct.
Meetings of a group or individuals?
Correct.
Just a quick question. Your addition to your lower level, the need for a conference room?
I put a small conference room, because here's what happens. Once in a while, we'll have a closing during the day during business hours that are three or four people that really need privacy. So I don't have in my office space a spot for that, just to have a quick privacy closing, which only takes really 30 minutes or so, come in, sign the closing documents, and leave. Right now, we have almost... I have two small offices, one on each side, that one I use, one another woman uses, and then the rest is just open space there. Most of it's not used during the day, but it's still not private to handle those documents.
The additional space for you is not for more employees, bigger meetings?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No one... We don't have huge, huge meetings anymore. If we get six people to show up nowadays to work, that's a miracle. If we get six people to show up nowadays to work, that's a miracle.
Anybody else in the public wish to come forward to ask questions as testimony? Gonna close it again. Okay. A motion to close?
Motion.
Mike and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Counselor? Thank you. Uh, next witness is William Figdor, Bill. He's the architect who designed the site plan, and he'll give us a description of the, um, the site, the building, um, and other site improvements. Yeah, I don't, this says restart. If, everyone wanna plug something in and show? Yeah, have a thumb drive.
How's this?
Good. Uh, can you state your qualifications, spell your name, state your qualifications?
Uh, William Figdor, architect.
I, I apologize.
Please state your name and spell it.
Okay, William? Figdor.
Spell it, your last name.
William, uh, fig, last name is Figdor. F-I-G-D-O-R.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, what?
State your name.
I, William Figdor.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth.
Tell the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
In these proceedings, so help me God.
In this proceeding, so help me God.
Thank you.
Can you state your qualifications for the board?
Um, I'm an architect, registered in New Jersey and New York and other states, um, since 89.
And you testified before?
Uh, yeah, I've testified before many boards for variances.
Who accepts the witness? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please proceed.
Okay, the, uh, I don't have a prepared speech. So I wasn't sure what to exactly say, but based on the engineering report...
Well, let me make a suggestion. Why don't you let the, Mr. Boner, lead you through the questions, so we can do this in an orderly way?
Sorry, we're having technical difficulties.
Donna, it's not reading.
Let's try this.
Let's try it.
... floor, which was back on that previous plan. I'll go back to that again. We can see it on A4. That's going to be a conference room for the existing real estate office. On A3, that shows the second floor with a suite. There's two suites. Each has its own bathroom, which also meet ADA, American Disabilities Act. The layout is pretty simple. It's not complicated in that sense. So the building, apparently there were some previous iterations that got reduced, and that's included in these plans. This is the actual proposal.
Just to clarify, we had an informal meeting, a DRC, and in response to that, would you agree that the building size was reduced, the impervious was reduced, we added exterior lighting, landscaping, and additional parking spaces?
Yeah, there was submissions. We had to resolve on those, the parking, for instance. The existing site is on a busy road, but it's, I'm not going to describe it as a highway because it's limited to 35 miles an hour, and the side residential street is a nice quiet neighborhood. I can't express my opinion, but I don't believe this will negatively impact it. But that's just my personal opinion. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to share that.
What?
I don't think it's a hindrance to the neighborhood. I think it's an asset.
We have a planner for that.
The original site now, it doesn't really have a nice layout, and the, let me just go to that. Sheet A1. The existing building is just kind of placed there on the corner with no real landscaping. The new one will look more enhanced. It'll be more conducive for business, but also with the neighborhood. There'll be plantings and shrubbery, as you can see on the proposed site plan on the lower right corner of A1. And it'll help to kind of isolate the building with plants, plantings that will enhance the property. Lighting has also been addressed. I don't see that here, honestly. There's lighting in the back of the, for the staircase in the back on the rear elevation on A6. And also in the front on the proposed front elevation. For access to the second floor, there's a staircase on the right side of the building. If you look at proposed front elevation, there's a stair that goes to the back across the two offices.
You would access that directly from the parking spaces on that side of the building?
Yeah.
And there's a sidewalk?
The side that has the five parking spaces.
And there's a sidewalk?
Yes, there's a sidewalk there. Let me go back to that plan. On A1, where the five parking spaces are, that's the walk that extends around the front of the building and to the sidewalk as well, to the stairs.
And by adding the landscaping and reducing the size of the addition on the first floor, from the initial project, the impervious on-site was reduced, correct?
That is true.
And are you familiar with the Fantina Engineering waiver request letter submitted? And can you describe the impact on the site? I know one of the members of the public was asking questions about drainage and impervious. Is, will there be more runoff created even though the size of this roof is only being increased by?
The 10 by 25.
But the impervious is being reduced?
Yeah, the actual impervious total is 385 square feet, which is too small to have any measurable impact. The property will be graded so that the impervious surfaces will drain towards the street and away from neighboring properties.
Which is no change in the current grading, correct? I mean, we're not changing the on-site grading to direct the water in any direction. It's going to continue to flow.
No, there's no disruption in the existing flow.
Okay.
So we're not changing the grade of the property, is what you're asking? We're not.
Is there anything further you want to describe?
Well, there's two things. One is that the impervious coverage, the disturbance is below the threshold for, which is a quarter acre for the NJDEP Storm Order Management. So it's below those requirements. I'm sorry. Oh, no. And lastly, the soil for, if we do, to compensate for the additional coverage, the soil's listed as having a, the depth of the soil does not allow for, the top soil basically is clay, based on the report from the engineers. And that doesn't allow for proper draining. If you try to install an impervious storm drain system on the property, a dry well, the clay won't absorb the water. And that's, it's right at the top. It's not like well below the surface. So if you do install something like that, it's going to have no effect on the stormwater drainage. So I'm just kind of paraphrasing what the engineer said, so excuse me if I don't say it and read it directly from the list. I'm just trying to paraphrase.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple of questions that I think will help him clarify? Mr. Figdor, so going back to exterior lighting for just a second, is it fair to say that the lighting that you're proposing would have a minimum of 0.5-foot candles in paved areas and walkways?
I would say that we're going to meet the requirements, and I don't know what exact brand. We're not, I'm just going to say yes, but I don't have a technical answer for that right now.
The applicant is willing to make that a condition of approval.
If, basically, if you're putting lights over the exterior doors, if you're putting lights over the stair and the balcony, you should easily be able to meet that standard. But, you know, your choice of lighting is obviously still to come, but that's the standard that the town's going to look for you to meet.
Yeah, it's a low level of lighting.
Now, as far as drainage goes, I agreed with the premise for the waiver, and I heard testimony that there's a nominal increase in the amount of impervious coverage, which results in a nominal increase in the amount of runoff. And that can be directed through the curb to a street from your roof drains to make sure that it's not impacting an adjoining property. So the testimony that we had discussed at the DRC was that the roof drains were going to be bled out through the curb. Now, the county won't let you do that on Raritan Road, but you can come through the curb on Terry Lane and keep the water from immediately draining to adjoining properties.
The applicant would accept as a condition of approval, working with the board engineer and having a system that does not impact the residents on Terry Lane.
I don't think the town had any intentions of you putting in an underground drainage system in for a nominal increase in runoff. We're just trying to assure that the grading on the property is either improved to take the water out to a street so that the neighbors aren't immediately impacted by whatever the increase is.
That's okay with the applicant?
That's perfectly legitimate. There's no reason why they shouldn't be taken into account.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Figdor.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, and that is, I'm confused, and that's my normal state. On the second floor, are there two sets of offices? You described two suites.
There's two offices.
So there's an office on the first floor?
Yeah, there's two rooms.
So, and that offices on the second floor can be independently used by two entities?
Yes.
Okay, so really we're talking about three potential occupants, not two?
Well, the one on the first floor is John.
That's an occupant?
Yes.
Okay, so one occupant on the first floor, two separate occupants on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bonner, is Mr. Klein presenting testimony today, or is Mr. Figdor summarizing that testimony?
No, Mr. Klein is here to handle traffic and site circulation.
Okay. I think Mr. Klein is going to be able to present testimony about the amount of parking necessary for that space and how that parking, combined with Mr. Samson's parking demand, will result in this being sufficient for almost all purposes, if not all purposes. But that's testimony that's coming later.
Coming, correct.
Does anyone on the board have questions for this witness? Seeing none, I'd like motion to open this to the public. Thank you, Mike. Lance, thank you. This is now open to the public. Anyone wishing to discuss or have questions pertaining to the architect's testimony, and only the architect's testimony, please come forward. You'll have a chance at the end to make general statements. Please state your name and address.
Lance Powers, 5 Terry Lane. My question is on the drainage. You say you'll bring it out to Terry Lane, but we already have a flood problem on the end of our street. And when it freezes, so now we're going to have even more water on the end. So I don't want it on property, but it's really a problem at the end of our street, right? When it gets cold, it freezes, and we're, you know, we're pulling out on Raritan Road here, so it's not great. So that's my question on that. I'm not crazy about that idea.
I think what I heard the applicant talking about is that there's an increase in impervious coverage of only a couple hundred square feet, which means that the increase in runoff, that the amount of water is negligible over what's already there today. So that, so what the applicant's doing is channeling the water away from the adjoining properties and getting it out to a paved surface where it can be dealt with, where there's a township-wide drainage system. So the amount of water should be, you know, when, I can't even calculate a number that low because you're working in tenths of a cubic foot per second when you're working on this type of drainage.
There is no drain at the end of our street.
What's that?
There is no drain at the end of our street. So can we propose a drain on the end of the street? Okay, so that's a problem. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Please do so. Got cut off, Kevin.
Hello, so I have a question. Victor Ferrera, 12 Terry Lane.
Can I spell your last name, please?
12 Terry Lane. I'm assuming that this building's going to get a new sewer lateral. Is that on the Terry side, or is that on the Raritan Road side?
I'm, well, first off, I'm not sure whether they're going to need a new sewer lateral. I haven't heard that testimony yet. They'd obviously be connecting into whatever lateral is there and that they're already using. If there were to be a new lateral proposed, I think the applicant is going to find an easier approval process to come out to Terry Lane than to come out to Raritan Road, both for a county approval process and for ease of construction. The new connections would go out towards Terry.
Understood, okay. In regards to the dumpster, John was saying that he's going to push it back. Can you bring the picture up if you don't mind? I'm just confused as, what does that mean? What's the definition of pushing it back? And where do you find the space to do that?
So the distance from the building to the property line is 16 feet?
I'm sorry.
In other words, he's pushing it?
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. So the distance from the building to the rear property line is 16 feet. A dumpster can be pushed back along, basically along the building, back further behind the parking.
So behind a parking spot?
Yeah, in other words, pushed.
In this area.
Further, further back, okay. I wasn't aware of that going that far back.
You can't put it back there. How's the truck going to get it?
If I can ask a question again, Mr. Bonner?
Are you going to have a site engineer speak to any of this?
No, Mr. Figdor prepared the site plan. If there are, if there continue to be additional engineering questions, Mr. Samson would, we'd like to put on the rest of the witnesses that we have tonight, but we understand we might have to, the surveyor who did the plan, who did the survey, is not, was not available tonight.
Can I solve that problem real quick?
No, no, listen, we're limited to the testimony that was given. If you want to say something at the end, you'll have that opportunity. Have you received answers to your questions, Mr. Ferrera?
Not regarding the container yet. I had asked, the question is, if you propose to push it back, where's it going to go? And I think they're saying it's going to go all the way to the corner by the trees. Am I correct or incorrect?
I think what the township's condition is likely to be would be that the applicant show the location of the dumpster on the plan and that it be agreed that the township engineer and their engineer or architect says that that dumpster can be accessed properly and appropriately, and that it'll be sited and it'll have a proper enclosure in accordance with the town's ordinance.
If, can I address this? If it's not necessary that a commercial use have an exterior dumpster, the applicant would be willing to incorporate trash and recycling within the building and put it out in a standard fashion on pickup days. This, I, I mean, Mr. Samson can testify, but I don't believe these businesses generate a lot of waste.
You'd be generating another waiver of an ordinance provision to have a dumpster, but I'm sure your notice provides for...
The magic language, yes.
... your request of that.
Or any additional waivers. I mean, if it's required and the township wants it, it'll have an exterior dumpster. But if it's a, if it's an issue with the neighborhood, he's more than willing to accommodate something that works, and if that means interior storage, I think he'd be willing to do that.
Yes, sir. Yes, I would.
I have one more question. Mr. O'Connor, you were saying that, I guess, county code is you can't have the runoff going to, but you could go to Terry Lane? Is that like a township?
The county won't allow a roof drain to be accessed through the curb. It's just one of those county provisions.
What Clark does?
They would let you have an overground roof drain that drains towards the street, but they won't let you put an outlet through the curb.
Okay, but Clark is, we're allowed to do that in Clark?
We almost insist on it because of the proximity of the homes together. Discharging, discharging a roof drain 10 feet from your neighbor's foundation doesn't usually lead to good things.
And just to reiterate what was said before, there will be no changes to the on-site grading or drainage. And the drainage report that was submitted in the request for the waiver indicated that, and Mr. O'Connor agreed that the increase in runoff, the increase in impervious is negligible, creates a negligible amount of additional drainage. So, meaning that the condition existing at this time will effectively not change. Further questions?
Kevin White, 3 Myra Place, Clark, New Jersey. I got a question for the township engineer and the architect. Since there is no Belgium block from the stop sign on Terry and Raritan Road all the way back to 1 Myra Place, which is the first house behind the gentleman that wants to do the addition. And since the drainage is going to be coming off of that property onto Terry Lane, I know the closest, from living there for 35 years, the closest storm sewer on Terry Lane is at the corner of Terry Lane and Myra Place. If you drive down Terry Lane on the right-hand side, it's approximately 200 to 300 feet down Terry Lane. So that water that's coming off that gentleman's property, including all the houses on Terry Lane, has to drain into that storm sewer all the way down at the end of the street. The county failed, failed miserably, when they put the plans in to put a storm sewer at the intersection of Terry and Myra, which means during the wintertime, when we get a heavy rain and we get black ice, we get about a two-inch puddle at the end of our street that makes it almost impossible to pull out onto Raritan Road with a speed limit there of 35 miles an hour. It endangers the people that live in that neighborhood. There's also flooding we get that goes up from the gentleman's property up past Columbia Savings Bank because the closest storm sewer on our side of the street is up by Columbia Bank. I'm sure you have the plans there. You can look at the plans that, you know, are going to take care of it. My question is, what's going to be done to rectify this problem?
The applicant is responsible for its site, not for improvements in the right-of-way.
Okay. My other question is, I noticed on the plans that you have stairs going up, if you're looking at the building from Raritan Road, on the right-hand side of the building. And then the stairway go up, and then there's a balcony that goes across the back. Is there a way to reverse that and put the stairway on the other side of the building so it's not an eyesort of people that live across the street on Terry Lane?
Well, first of all, for traffic, travel perspective, coming from the parking lot.
Speak into the microphone and address the board.
Okay, this is William Figdor, architect. The question was whether the stairs can be put on the back of the building. because it's visually considered unattractive. First of all, it's there for a reason because of the accessibility from the parking lot. It could, in theory, be put across the back, but then we'd, you'd have to consider a walkway around the building to the back of it from the parking. It didn't seem like it was a good solution.
Captain, the stairwell, putting the stairwell on the opposite side of the building would require an additional variance because it would encroach into the side yard. They're trying to expand an existing building and make use of how that works, but the little bump out on the opposite side is where that stairwell would go and the addition wouldn't be possible on that side if the stairwell were there because it would encroach further into the side yard.
You're not looking at houses on the opposite side of the building. You're looking at a commercial building, a two-story commercial building that houses offices and karate school. Where on the Terry Lane side, you're looking at a neighborhood that's going to be looking at stairway going up to the second floor.
Isn't there a stairway on the house immediately across Terry Lane? An exterior staircase?
Yes, there is.
I'm sure the applicant would be willing to downplay the look of the staircase, you know, and with decorative railing or something to make it look good.
If you look on the rendering, on the top right on drawing A zero, that is the visual impact of the stair.
In addition to that, if I look where the gray car is parked in the front, up against the building, that's where I was asking if the additional stair, the stairway could be placed there. You know, just out of thought. And my next question is, the people live at 1 Terry Lane. Their property line is probably, well, their house is approximately.
Are the people from 1, are the people from 1 Terry Lane here?
Well, my question is about the lighting.
Okay.
My question is, how is the lighting going to affect the sleeping, the people that live in the neighborhood?
The applicant has already testified that they're willing to accept as a condition of approval that it meet, that it comply with the township's standards. And they have, they regulate the amount of light, what's called spill over. Additionally, the applicant is putting in a significant amount of landscaping to block that, plus a fence, I believe. It'll be in compliance with the ordinance.
You know, I don't think.
They're not going to be bright shiny lights outside of that house, shining directly into anybody's bedroom or anything like that.
You're talking about, I think the town ordinance states that you can't put a fence higher than six foot.
Right, but there's landscaping that's going to be taller than that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Chris Bosha, 2 Terry Lane. I live directly across the street. So to that question about the lights, what you're saying with the landscaping is going to help the next door neighbor. We live directly across the street. So how does that work for us?
I'll let the architect address that, but the statement of the applicant is that it will, he will comply with the ordinance. So the spill over on the immediately adjacent neighbor's property, as well as the property line facing Terry, are the same requirements. Whatever the foot candle requirement is, it will be met.
So what are the requirements?
Half a foot candle. And the lighting, I believe, that's being considered is downward.
Do they turn off? Do they not turn off?
You're asking me questions that I can't answer. I don't know.
So who can answer them? We live directly across the street from that.
Okay, hold on a second. Excuse me. First of all, how do you spell your last name?
B.O.S.C.I.A.
Your first question is, where will light shine onto 2 Terry Lane? Can you answer that question, Mr. Bonner?
I can't, no.
The lighting, the lighting itself is directed down towards the walkways. It's not directed like out to the street or across the street.
Oh, when we're.
Hold on, hold on. That wasn't my question.
Let me, let me clarify something.
Wait.
You asked a question. I want him to answer.
Excuse me, stop.
Wait a minute. What my question was, was when we asked the question about the lights, he said there's going to be shrubbery there to block it, right? So we wouldn't see it. But there's no shrubbery in front of their property going out to the street. That's where we are across from.
Right.
That's my question.
And.
So my question was, well, you can make all the faces you want.
I'm trying to answer your question.
And I'm trying to ask you a question, so you can wait and then answer it. How does that sound? Okay, good.
All right.
So what I'm saying is, is there a particular time where the lights go off? Or are they on all the time? If they're on all the time, we look out of our house and see the lights on.
Will you, will you accept the condition that the lights are shut off after 8:00 P.M.?
I don't have a problem with that. They're downlights anyway, so.
I'm just asking, will you accept the condition?
Yes.
But they're downlights. They don't shut.
I would also point out that there is no lighting being added on the property line and there's nothing facing the other side of Terry Lane. The lights, the new lights are on the building and they're lighting the staircase going upstairs.
Which is across the street from our house.
And they're not facing, the lights do not direct light towards your house. They're downward facing lights.
They're downward facing lights, they're very low voltage. It's no different than anybody else's home light that you would have on the front porch and it's not directed towards your house.
Excuse me, we're going to do this, stop, stop.
You understand that? We're directly.
Yeah, you can be as sarcastic as you want, but it's not going to help you get your question.
Mr. Bonner, this is not helping your record at all.
It's already been answered.
So the answer is yes, the lights are going to be on.
No.
Lights are going off at 8:00.
Excuse me, they will accept as a condition that the lights will go off at 8:00, meet all of the township's standards with respect to lighting, and as a physical matter, the lighting faces down. It doesn't spill over to the property. It would have to bounce off the ground to your property. So it's spacing downward. Okay? Do you have any other questions?
I have a question. Looking at this drawing, you have handicap bathrooms on the second floor. You have a handicapped parking spot. How is a handicapped person supposed to get up those stairs? And I don't know who to answer, ask that to. That's just something that's been bugging me, looking at this.
That's, for ADA, it's required to have parking. And the stairs have to meet code for ADA. In other words, 711, seven inches risers, 11 inch treads. That meets ADA. It doesn't have an elevator.
I'm just saying, there's no.
No, there is none.
There's no, there's no way for a person that's severely handicapped to get into the second floor?
Yeah, wheelchair.
Wheelchair, okay.
Do it.
That's bothersome, okay.
Do you have any additional questions for this witness? Seeing no one coming forward, I'd like a motion to close. Thank you, Lance.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor? Next witness, counselor. Our next witness is Lee Klein, professional engineer, here to testify on traffic and site circulation.
Read your name and spell it, please.
Lee, middle initial D as in Daniel, Klein, K.L.E.I.N.
Aye.
Aye.
Name.
Lee Klein.
I solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear?
I will tell the truth in these proceedings.
That I will tell the truth in these proceedings.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Qualify the witness, please.
I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer and that certification is current. I'm principal of Klein Traffic Consulting out of West Orange, New Jersey. And I've been here before.
All in favor?
Aye.
May proceed.
Thank you. I prepared a traffic engineering and parking evaluation report dated February 17th, 2023. And in that report, I evaluated the available parking, both proposed onsite and along Terry Lane. We did some calculations for the parking. We're requiring 13 parking spaces where seven parking spaces are proposed onsite. The six parking spaces that we're looking, if we need those, would be on Terry Lane, a public street. I did not find any posted signs for restricting parking on Terry Lane and I couldn't find any restrictions in the township of Clark, general legislation, vehicles and traffic, Article 5, traffic regulations for Terry Lane. We also did our observations on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, between 10:00 a.m. and noon. 10:00 a.m. and noon is the peak hour of typically of an office use. We went out there to see what the parking situation on Terry Lane was. At that time, we found in excess of 12 available parking spaces between 10:00 and noon on Tuesday, January 17th. On January 17th. We looked at the parking generation fifth edition for small office building and we looked at the current 1,000 square foot building and what the parking demand would be for that. It would be approximately three cars based on I.T.E. parking data. And when I was there during my observations, there were three cars parked there for that 1,000 square foot lot, building. When we proposed the expansion to get it up to over 2,400 square feet, we're looking at approximately six parked cars according to I.T.E. And we've got seven parking spaces onsite. As you heard from, they're looking for a low intensity type of use, a single proprietor type of facility. Like you said, an architect, maybe an accountant, an attorney, maybe even a traffic engineer. We also looked at the trip generation of the change from the 957 square foot office to a 2,473 square foot office. That 1,500 square foot increase would generate approximately three additional trips in the morning peak hour and three additional trips in the evening peak hour. That's one hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening. That would be approximately two cars coming in and one leaving in the morning and two cars leaving and one coming back in in the evening. I just want to make a note, I didn't do any calculations, but based on some of the previous comments, there are other uses that are, I would consider more intense from a traffic standpoint, other retail uses and possibly restaurants that would generate more traffic and more trips than a small office of this size. Yeah, I'm going to get the next. So I also looked at the Clark Township Police Department's memo of February 16th, 2023. And in that, the detective had some comments about the parking. What I would say is that the site plan that we're proposing, we continue to have the parking spaces that are perpendicular to Terry Lane. Those vehicles currently move in and out by coming in off of Raritan, making a left turn into their parking spot. When they're ready to leave, they back out into Terry Lane and then come out towards Raritan Road. So that'll continue. And as I said before, the number of trips that are going to occur during the peak hour is negligible. Couple of more trips of that nature coming in and out. And as I said before, the parking on Terry Lane is public parking. I don't feel, based on the amount of square footage and the use of possibly three tenants, that we're going to be needing more than seven parking spaces that we have onsite. If we did park on Terry Lane, if any of our tenants parked on Terry Lane, they'd have to obviously be at least 50 feet from a stop sign or 25 feet from a crosswalk. He made another comment about the size of the parking spaces. They are nine by 18 parking spaces. And again, the way that they're operating today, they'll continue to operate that way. The two additional spots that we're putting on the front of the building, parallel to the front of the building, those vehicles will pull in, park, and when they're ready to leave, they'll maneuver to get out and either come out to Raritan, most likely come out to Raritan Road. He also mentioned something about possibly putting bollards to prevent vehicles that are parking from driving into the building. I think that might actually be a comment maybe for the architect, but it could either be a bollard or possibly a wheelstop.
The applicant would be willing to put bollards in if the town wanted them or something more decorative, if that worked better.
That was requested in the police department's memo, Mr. Bonner.
Yes. He'd be willing to put in the bollards. He's just thinking about how it might look and there might be something better that the township engineer would, we would work with. The town, and if bollards are the end result, that would be fine.
So in conclusion, I reviewed the site plan and I said before, the perpendicular parking spaces, the ones that are perpendicular to the building, perpendicular to Terry Lane, they'll continue to operate in the same manner that they operate today. The parallel parking spaces in front of the building, again, would, people would pull into that spot. When they're ready to leave, they would maneuver out of that spot and pull that onto Raritan Road. The number of parking spaces we're proposing is seven. According to the I.T.E., for a small office of 2,400 square feet, six parked cars would be the peak parking demand for this type of a use. And we're providing seven. And if we did have the need for additional parking, they could park on the street. As I said, when I was out there observing during the day, parking was available. When I drove by this evening, as people come home for work after 5:00 P.M., then the parking on the street is taken up by the residents. And I think that's a good mix of the different uses. That's all I have for direct.
Klein, would it be fair to say that if Mr. Samsel were to try to lease to a more intense use, that the owner of that use would probably find the lack of parking not to his liking? So that it's almost that a low-impact use has to go here because of the way that the parking is configured? Someone wouldn't want to lease space that didn't have enough parking for their use?
I agree 100%. It's, and as Mr. Samsel said, he's looking for a specific type of occupant to go upstairs. And I think that's exactly what you're going to see. And I recall that the applicant also stated that as, as being in the real estate business, he would have difficulty marketing to someone who had an intense use.
You mentioned a number of times that you evaluated Clark Township ordinances and found no restrictions to use on-street parking. However, our engineer states in his letter, and the Clark Land Development Ordinance does say and indicates you are not allowed to use off-street parking in your count.
No, what I said was, I didn't see any restrictions to legally park on Terry Lane. But you're saying we're not allowed to count those spaces?
Correct.
Right, so what I'm saying is, from the I.T.E. data, I found that we're looking at an average peak parking demand of approximately six parked cars and we've got seven spaces onsite.
Does the I.T.E. take into account that there's three separate businesses?
It looks at the square footage. And again, because it's such a small facility, I mean, we're looking at, right now, there's three cars parked for the downstairs and from what Mr. Samsel said, that's not going to expand. And then upstairs, if they each had a car, that's only five. If one of them had a second car, that's six. If they both had two cars, that's seven.
Meaning nobody could come to the site without parking off-site?
Correct, correct.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Samsel had stated that in some instances when he's had a closing or something and they've had more people onsite, that they've made use of aisle ways and the spaces behind other parked cars. Is it likely that if there were additional people who wanted to access the space, that that's what they'd do? They'd park behind parking spot five? Or they'd park in the aisle next to the two handicap spots? Or they'd park behind the other parked cars, not in the street first before they would use other off-street parking?
I believe that's true, yeah, because it's closer to park onsite than it would be to park down Terry Lane. That's correct.
Anybody else on the board have questions?
What's the parking difference been in January 17th versus, say, I don't know, June 15th or something like that? Is there, is there much of a difference in?
I just did a sample of.
I just did a sample of what the parking situation was on Terry Lane. Typically, between 9:00 and 5:00 or 8:00 and 6:00, people are left to go to work. And then they come home after 5:00 or 6:00. So again, that's why I'm saying this is a nice mix of use where this facility will be operating 9:00 to 5:00. And then the people that live on Terry Lane, for the most part, some of them will be going to work between 8:00 and 6:00.
Right, I think that my question though is...
Between January and June, I mean, again, I think, I mean, that, all the houses on the street each have their own driveway. I didn't see much parking on the street. I saw a handful of cars parked on the street. Couple of people came in and left during that time. But I would say that typically, what I saw was basically a sample to show that we had, like I said, at least a dozen empty parking spaces on Terry Lane. If it was only six, there's still ample parking on Terry Lane.
Other than maybe someplace like the Jersey Shore, does the I T E take into account, you know, seasonal differences?
Well, now we're talking about...
In a kind of a mixed neighborhood like this?
I think the question was, I went out in January. What if I went back out in June? What if I went back out in November? Again, I think typically people go to work during the day. Some people do stay home from work. Some people are retired and stay home. I think I caught a snapshot of what Terry Lane parking is during the day on a typical weekday. And again, I don't think more than seven cars are going to be parked based on 2,400 square feet of small office, one tenant on the first floor, and possibly two tenants upstairs.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? This witness? Seeing that, I'd like a motion to open to the public. Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Mike. If anyone from the public would like to come up and have questions regarding this testimony and this testimony only, please come forward, state your name, address.
My name is Nuria Moreno and I'm 15 Terry Lane.
Can you spell your last name, please?
I'm sorry?
Spell your last name.
M-O-R-E-N-O.
Thank you.
And my question is, I keep hearing about the six parking spots, six parking spots and maybe seven on the street. What we're seeing is our kids are on the street all the time. I'm home part-time. I work part-time, sometimes the kids, I walk them to camp. Sometimes they walk in a group by themselves. We're concerned about cars going in and out, not taking our parking spots. Because like you said, we have driveways. It's about the kids. The kids are walking to the rec, walking home, walking to school. And we don't really, you know, we don't want to have to be worried about that traffic. You're saying seven cars. Okay, six, he said he had six the other day because he had a meeting. That means the two tenants are going to have maybe four or three other cars. Where are they going to park? On our street? Great. But now we have to worry about our kids walking to the rec, walking to practice, walking to camp. That's what we're concerned about. So what's, I don't know, like, how are we going to fix that? I mean, you're not going to be able to just fit everyone on that parking lot, even if you park one behind the other. And I guess that's just my concern. I don't know. I don't know how you would answer that.
All I can do is reiterate what I did in my traffic study. The trip generation right now for the office as it is, two cars come in in the morning. What we're going to see in the future is two additional cars, four cars coming in in the morning. So yeah, we're going to be doubling the traffic from two to four entering. And in the evening-peak hour, same type of thing. Two cars will be leaving during the peak hour. In the future, four cars will be leaving during the peak hour.
Okay, well, our street is, in the summer, the kids are home. When I'm home, the kids are home. They're all on the street because I'm home. So, you know, it does, it's not a nine-to-five thing.
But again, we're at the end of Terry Lane closest to Raritan. People come in off of Raritan, turn right into our driveway. And when they're ready to leave, they pull out and they go back out to Raritan.
But if they're parked on the street, they're going to be parking right in front of our houses, right?
Just like your neighbors park on the street. Neighbors don't park on the street either?
No, they do.
Right, so they have to be careful when they're pulling out and the kids are playing as well? No?
I guess, but you're adding more traffic to our street, right? That's what you're saying?
Two more trips coming in in the morning-peak hour.
Okay.
And two more leaving in the P.M.-peak hour.
And, and the traffic is limited to the area where the business is? They're not cars driving up and down the street?
Correct.
And you're talking about the kids in the street? Are, are the kid, do the kids use the area of Terry Lane close to Raritan Road as a place where they play?
Well, all of our kids, all of our kids play together, so it goes from...
Right, but do they, do they play out by Raritan Road? Is this what I'm asking you?
Six to the end.
To Raritan Road?
Probably.
Your kids play...
From six to the end. So that's most of the street.
From six, Terry toward Raritan?
Or, no, six back.
Back towards Myrna?
Right.
Yeah. So we're already a couple of homes in...
Away from this property.
Away from this property. No? That's what you said?
Okay, I guess. I'm just saying.
I mean, I, as a kid, I wouldn't want to play out and my ball ends up in Raritan Road. So I want to play towards the inside.
Obviously, obviously, that's not what I'm saying.
Nice streets to play in, it's a very quiet street.
It is, it is. And we're just trying to keep it that way. We want to make sure that it's going to stay like that.
It will remain quiet because the traffic will be coming into our driveway. If our site was at the end of Terry Lane down past Myrna, then yeah, we'd have two more cars going the full length of Terry Lane. But they're not going to be going the full length of Terry Lane.
Okay, I guess we will see. Thank you.
Come forward? Yes, you may approach us.
My name is Jeremy Riggs, R-I-G-G-S, at 7 Terry Lane. To reiterate what she was saying about the kids playing in the street, it's not about the parking that you already have, it's on-street parking. And they will have to go down Terry Lane. They're not going to do a U-turn, you know, in the middle of the street to go back out to Raritan Road. They're going to go down Terry Lane, Myrna, out Janie Lane. That's the legal way to do it. So the concern was there that when you have 22 kids on a July morning playing in the street, it's just going to enhance the traffic going through our neighborhood. If it's two cars, four cars, eight cars, you don't know. You know, and two more businesses, two more employees. If I'm an architect, I have meetings at my building. If I'm a realtor, I bring in clients. So, you know, realistically, having two extra cars is not realistic. You know it, I know it. You know, data can show what you want, but people have a business and they're going to conduct business in their business. But anyway, so my question is, what's the, the data going to show the traffic patterns that's going to increase in our little quiet neighborhood? That's our only concern. Build all you want. I love to architect, it looks beautiful. You know, grow your business, but we are a quiet neighborhood, hidden gem of Clark. You know, we are all old-school. Our kids go outside and play, we don't got to worry. You know, parents are in the front yard, in the backyard. Kids are riding their power wheels, bicycles, basketball hoops, all in our neighborhood. We don't want to change none of that. Now, other parts of Clark, you guys can build all you want. You know, Clark is building everywhere, not in my neighborhood. You know, I have my kid outside, seven-year-old, you know, playing with all their friends. Chris is across the street, they're best friends. I don't need more cars coming down my street. It's 25 miles an hour, but we all do 10.
What is your question?
The question is, what's the data on traffic going through our neighborhood, you know, throughout the day? You can't guarantee there's only going to be two extra cars. Data.
Traffic engineers study the peak hour of, of a development. So we look at the one hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and the one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening. During the day, there'll be movement in and out. People will go to lunch. People may have to leave at 10:00 o'clock to go to a meeting. But those will be less trips than what we're seeing between one hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening. So we look at the worst two hours of the day. Everything other than that will be less.
That takes into account a business such as real estate that has continuing traffic throughout the peak hours. It doesn't seem to take into account that. Your statement of looking at only the two peak periods...
Right.
Doesn't seem to take into account that a business that we have here now will have people coming and going all day long, so it's not really tied to the peak that you're talking about.
Well, I think the applicant testified he's not really a traditional real estate office that has a lot of people coming and going. I mean, he can reiterate the, you know, testimony they gave before, but it's not a real estate office where people are coming to meet with agents and stuff like that. What he testified to, I believe, was that their agents come to the office once in a while, but they typically go to other people's houses because they're more of a listing office than a sales office.
John, is that all correct?
Correct.
Does anybody else on the public have any questions regarding this witness? Come forward, state your name again and address.
Hello again, Mike Savino, 17 Terry Lane. That's S-A-V-I-N-O. I have a question for you. Did your assessment account for the lack of sidewalks on Terry Lane? And you stated before, we have driveways and we can park in our driveways. We know we have driveways. We have more than just one car. Most households have two, three, four, five cars. Did you account for all of that?
When I went there during the day, when the office would be open between, when I was there, the peak of an office, 10:00 a.m. to noon, I found a handful of cars parked on Terry Lane. When I drove by this evening at around 6:45, people are home from work. The street was pretty full, but there was still parking for at least four to six cars on Terry Lane. Did that answer the first part of your question?
Not quite, but I don't believe there was four to six cars at this time.
No, 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 four to six available parking spaces.
You're taking small snapshots and you're using this as your average.
Right. If you were to have a party between 10:00 and noon on a weekday, you'd be parking on the, on the street.
To Nuria's point also, in the summertime, the children play in the street. And you said, oh, the neighbors have to watch the kids, right?
I don't know if I said that, but, but they do, sure.
Right. People visiting his business or whoever it is, they're not aware of there's kids playing in the street. They're just going to drive 25. None of us drive 25 miles an hour on our own road.
I noticed.
We drove, we drive about 10 to 15 miles an hour.
I saw some...
Very tight.
Okay. So...
You don't live there.
No, no, I'm just telling you what I observed when I was out there.
I don't take your assessment as accurate.
All right. Thank you. Did I answer a question or was there a question?
Mr. Klein, is it fair to say that if Mr. Samsel hadn't purchased this building and operated his real estate business here, that another type of business that would conform to the zone standards might require potentially substantially more parking than this type of use that's being discussed would have?
Potentially, it depends on, right now, we're about 1,000 square feet. And I think we need six or seven or eight parking spaces, depending on which use you're talking about.
So if, for example, this were operated as a hair or nail salon or some type of retail operation, would the parking demand for this size facility be substantially higher than the six or seven spaces that we're talking about for this type of low-impact real estate and other low-impact use?
Yes.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like a motion from the board to close. Questions, this witness? Who we have first? Mike and Mike? Okay. Our final witness is Nicholas Graviano, professional planner.
State your name and spell it, please.
My name is Nicholas with an H, Graviano, G-R-A-V-I-Z, invictor, I-A-N-O.
Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nicholas Graviano.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth and the whole truth.
That I will tell the truth and the whole truth?
In this proceeding.
In this proceeding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Yes, as I stated before, my name is Nicholas Graviano. I am a planner and partner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners. Business address of 101 Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel Drew, Jersey. I hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, and a law degree from Temple University School of Law.
We have a motion. All in favor?
My license is valid.
You accept it?
Thank you. So we, we've heard a lot of testimony tonight and we've heard a lot of passionate neighbors. And, you know, I applaud them for being here. Your home is places you live and one of your most important investments. So I understand the concern of the neighbors being here in the room this evening. But this applicant is requesting a very modest proposal. It's situated on a parcel known on the township tax maps as Block 30, Lot 53. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval with associated C variances for the proposal. To break it down, this proposal adds roughly 280 square feet of footprint on the first floor, therefore providing 1,280 feet of office space on the second floor. So this proposal is to add a very modest 1,280 square feet of office space on the top floor and 200 and change on the first floor. This is a permitted use. The applicant is committing to providing permitted uses in the C-N. I almost slipped and said N-C because that's where it's called in most places. But this is a commercial, neighborhood commercial district which permits a wide range of commercial uses from retail, restaurants, taverns, you know, other commercial uses. And I think Mr. O'Connor asked Mr. Klein a very important question. You know, what uses could be located on this site that are more intensive? So when you look at what could be placed on this site today without the addition, without the addition, this site can accommodate a convenience store and have enough parking by right to accommodate it. Certainly, having a convenience store open from morning to night with in-and-out traffic all day, you know, that, that's something that would create a substantial amount of traffic here. You have an applicant committing to putting uses in the building which are complementary to the neighbors. When it boils down to, the applicant is committing to providing low, low-intensity, general and professional offices within the building. And frankly, that is a better scenario than what could be done under conforming scenarios as we speak today. And I'll get into some of those issues when I break down the variances and the justifications for those variances. Firstly, with the variance that the applicant's requesting this evening, the applicant is requesting a variance for lot size. Obviously, that's not changed by this application. 7,500 square feet is required and 6,632 square feet is proposed. Additionally, the applicant is requiring the minimum parking setback design waiver from the street. That's an existed, existing condition that's not going to be changed by this application as well. In terms of that variance, it's, it's certainly able to be granted under the C1 criteria, whereas it relates to a specific condition affecting a specific piece of property. Here, you have an existing piece of property with existing commercial use that's been there for quite some time. Obviously, that variance can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. This applicant is creating two new variances. That relates to the front yard setback on Terry Lane, whereas 25 feet is required and the applicant's proposing 15 feet. And that relates to the portion of the stairs that are, that are going to be added to the site. Additionally, we've, we've discussed at length the number of parking spaces. 13 are required, whereas seven are proposed on-site. You've heard the testimony by Mr. Klein, very skilled at his craft, who ran the data. These are very modest office uses. At peak hour, six off-street parking spaces are required by the use, whereas the applicant is providing seven. So when you look at the two variances that the applicant's creating, they can certainly be granted under the C2 criteria, whereas under the C2 criteria, it must relate to a specific piece of property. Here you have an existing office building located in a commercial office district at the corner of Raritan and Terry. The applicant must also demonstrate that advantage. The applicant must also demonstrate that advances purpose of zoning of the municipal land use law. In this case, this application advances purpose A, promotion of the general health, safety, morals, and welfare. The applicant is providing an updated structure, certainly provides the opportunity for additional employment opportunities. It also provides an enhancement of the ratable base. The applicant is also providing measures to provide screening to the neighbors. It also advances purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of commercial uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. As I stated, this is a permitted land use in the zoning district. And then lastly, I think this is a very key element of this application. This proposal advances purpose I, promotion of a desirable visual environment and creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. It's done in many ways. You saw the very nicely designed building by the architect. It's designed in a manner that makes this building look like a single-family dwelling. It has the massing of a single-family dwelling. So in this transitional area of commercial and residential, you have a building that fits in with the residential character of the neighborhood that's behind it. The applicant went through great care to design a building to look like that. There was numerous iterations of more modern-looking buildings, but this building that looked very residential and neighbor was certainly befitting of the neighborhood. And Mr. Samson is someone who cares about building positive relationships with his neighbors. There's certainly not a substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the applicant's request. The C2 variances are often referred to as the burdens versus benefits variances, and I think the benefits in this situation certainly outweigh the deficiency in parking and the front yard setback, which really doesn't impact any of the surrounding properties. The applicant's addition is next to the commercial use of the property. The applicant is not requesting any setback relief to the neighboring residential property on Terry. And I think that's an important aspect to this application, where the applicant chose to do the proposed addition. It's not impacting the residential properties because the applicant's not requesting any setback relief next to those properties and is providing landscaping and buffering to those properties. Certainly advances many of the objectives that were outlined in the 2013 Township Master Plan Reexamination, mainly firstly to maintain the high quality suburban character of Clark, a stable community with limited planned development. This is certainly a building which enhances the view of the site. When you look at corner buildings, they are gateways to neighborhoods. Right now, you have, while the applicant maintains the property, it's not the greatest-looking building, this addition will provide that sense of arrival and the gateway appearance that you like to have on corners of buildings. Additionally, the master plan seeks to promote a balance of land uses, including residential, commercial, industrial. Additionally, it seeks to safeguard the tax base, preserve the economic balance, and provide for continued sources of employment and tax ratables through the appropriate use of non-residential land. And I think this is certainly an appropriate use of non-residential land, where this applicant has come forth, and in the event of approval, will be bound by a resolution that eliminates the potential for a restaurant. It eliminates the potential for retail use. It eliminates the potential for tavern, because the applicant's site will be bound by this resolution, and any non-office uses will have to come back to this board. So that is the benefit of this applicant's application. That's eliminating the more intensive uses that the neighbors behind me are fearful of. I'm one of these people that has office space that rarely ever gets used. My partner and I, we have 10 people that work for us on various occasions. We have office space. It's rarely used. This is a new world. People work at home. Many of these office spaces are used for meetings a couple of times a month. I know firsthand because I'm in that situation. So frankly, I think this is an application that helps benefit the neighbors by eliminating land uses that could be more of a nuisance to the neighbor, cause more in-and-out traffic that the neighbors are concerned of. So certainly, the applicant's request for the C1 variance for the existing conditions can be granted, meeting the positive criteria, also not creating substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. And the newly created variances can be granted under the C2 criteria, advances in purposes A, G, and I, as well as advancing very important goals and objectives of the 2013 Master Plan Reexamination.
I have no questions, sir, Mr. Graviano.
Any from the board have questions to this witness? Nope. Seeing none, I'd like a motion to open to the public. Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Lance. At this point, anybody from the public wish to come forward and ask questions to this witness, his testimony and solely his testimony? Please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I ask a motion to close. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Lance.
That concludes our case, Mr. Chairman. I think you heard.
Well, if you're going to sum up, just hold on a second, because I think you want to reserve until the public makes comment. But I do have questions, though, with respect to the various reports that were submitted, because I want to make sure that you've agreed to all the terms of these reports.
I was going to address that in my closing.
No, well, I think it's important that it's been done now.
Okay.
The first one is from the FAR code official. It's an email from May 4, 2022. Frank Zarasa, you have it?
Yes. And we have those addresses.
Well, he said he wants the building monitored, fire alarm with carbon monoxide alarms.
Well, I would assume that it monitored.
Well, is his assumption correct?
Yep.
Going to Mr. O'Connor's report of February 9, 2023. Are there any conditions there that you will not be able to fulfill?
Other than as they may have been modified by the testimony tonight? No.
With respect to the waiver for the runoff, do you believe you provided enough testimony for that waiver?
Yes, I believe so.
And the Clark Police Department report of February 16, 2023, you'll comply with all of those items?
As addressed by Mr. Klein, yes. With the caveat regarding the ballards versus some other thing.
In terms of conditions, you've agreed to limit the hours of operation Monday to Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that limitation is to members of the public. Correct?
Correct.
There has been consistent testimony of one or two employees at each of the three businesses to be located there. Will you accept this as a condition that no more than two employees at any time will be in the facility?
I believe the applicant said that there are two full-time employees in his office, and there's a third part-timer that comes in and out, and agents come and go. So he has more employees than two, but on a daily basis, there will be typically two people there. But I don't know that you can state that there will only be two people in his office at any given time. I don't think that's what was agreed to.
And what about upstairs?
I think the testimony is that he's looking for tenants that would have one or two employees at most. But with the same caveat, it's his office. You can't, you know, people do get business visitors, and there may be more than two people in there at any given time, but I think the idea is that there will only be one or two permanent or full-time employees.
So the same conditions apply to all three units, all three spaces. Correct?
Sorry, my space I have myself. I have a full-time office manager, part-time staff that's in three days a week. There's no change in that. We have people that come and go all day. They come, and some people come at night to work, as I said earlier during testimony. Upstairs, what I'm looking to do to lower that impact is not to have high-impact businesses. I don't want the traffic upstairs. I want somebody like Nick that doesn't come in much.
Are you there all day?
I'm in and out all day. Some days, I'm there for six, seven hours.
The question is, are you willing to agree that on a typical day, there will only be two, at most, three employees in your office with visitors? And then upstairs, you'd be looking for someone with no more than one or two full-time employees?
So upstairs, one or two full-time employees is what I'd be looking for. Downstairs, as I said, we have agents that come and go. I'm not going to be totally transparent. They come and go. They're not, they're self-employed agents. They're not employed on a basis. There are 1099 people that come and go. That I can tell you, you know, some might be times, there might be three or four there. Some might be one there. Myself is there on a daily basis, my office manager, and my part-time assistant. You can't limit how many people live in a house on any street. And my thing is, what are you going to say, only six people can live in that house or four people can live in that house? I'm sorry, I understand, but that you can't tell me downstairs I can only have two people.
What we're asking is, I believe what he's asking is, are you willing to say that you have only two full-time employees on a typical day in your office and one part-time employee?
That is correct.
And upstairs, you will essentially limit your marketing to potential tenants that only have one or two employees?
That is 100% correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the lighting, it's limited to three places, over the doorways, the sidewalk, and the balcony, and you'll meet all township standards and work with the township engineer to come to a reasonable plan.
And, and, yes.
Okay. With respect to drain, the drain will be onto Terry Lane, but again, you'll work with the township engineer to come up with an acceptable drainage plan.
Agreed. With the understanding that the testimony was, there will be no change in the natural grading or drainage on the property.
But it will be subject to review by the township engineer.
Yep.
With respect to the dumpster, that may require an additional waiver. So the options here is, one, to ask for a waiver based upon the dumpster, the dumpster being physically located on the property, or all of the trash and recycling being dealt onsite inside.
If I understood, Mr. O'Connor, the waiver would be if there were no dumpster?
Yes, yes.
So one or two of those scenarios, working with Mr. O'Connor, is what you're proposing? So that effectively, you'd be granting a kind of a conditional waiver if the exterior dumpster couldn't be agreed upon? Does that sound right?
Mr. O'Connor?
I guess what we're hearing is that their preference is to put in a dumpster that will comply with our ordinance. If for some reason that becomes not effective or not possible, they'd like to be able to have a waiver to have no dumpster and to deal with their trash and recycling inside the facilities themselves.
Is that correct?
Yes, dumpster to me, you know, whatever the ordinance requires in terms of screening and location and hours of pickup.
Lights, lights will be off by 8:00 p.m.
Agreed to that, right? Yes.
Parking ballards or some other parking stop, you'll work again with the township engineer to develop either ballards or a parking stop of some short type. Correct?
Correct.
Those are the conditions that I have. Were there any others that I may have missed? Members of the board, did I miss any? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Check my notes very quickly. Thank you. I'll reserve, Phil, after the public portion for closing.
This time, I'd like a motion to open to the public for any comments they may have regarding this application. Mike, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Lance. Anyone from the public would like to come forward and make any comments regarding this application? Please do so now.
Hello again. Mike Savino, 17 Terry Lane, S-A-V-I-N-O. I agree with everything Mr. Cruz was saying. In this particular situation, would the planning board grant an allowance for no on-street parking for this square footage in this particular situation? Is that something that's possible?
You're asking the board to deny the parking variance.
Correct.
That's up to the board. That's the issue before the board, is whether or not a parking variance will be granted.
Right. But you have to grant it for him to move forward. Would you still allow him to move forward without granting it?
Well, that's a difficult question to answer, because there are, it's a site plan application, it's a variance application. I don't know how the board is going to take the application, whether it will take it in components or as a unit. So if it takes it as a unit, then the application would not proceed forward, because the applications do not. If it takes it individually, then it would be up to the applicant to decide how they want to proceed. Is that correct, Mr. O'Connor?
I was listening to my specialist, but I believe, I believe the answer is yes. What, and if I could just state, we're seeking a variance for the parking, because we only have seven parking spaces, and for overflow, there is the potential for street parking. What this gentleman is asking for is that that be prohibited, and I believe you're saying that that can be done, you just deny the variance. Am I correct?
Well, you're asking for a parking variance.
We're asking for a parking.
It's either granted or denied.
Correct. Understood.
If it's granted, then you can use off-street parking. If it's not, if it's denied, then you can't use off-street parking. You have to have onsite parking as required by the ordinance.
There's another procedure that the police department laid out in their memo, that if the on-street parking were to become problematic, the residents can ask the township council for permit parking, and permits would be granted to the residents. So it's likely that if a problem were to develop, which Mr. Klein's testimony was that he didn't anticipate that, because there should be sufficient space on-site. But if that were not to happen, and there was to be a problem in the neighborhood, the council may be able to address that, as it has on some other streets in town, by creating a permit parking, where the residents would have the right and would obtain those permits, and the business probably would not apply for those permits.
Would not, or would be prohibited?
Well, we can't tell what the council's going to do or not. That's a potential option down the road.
I was asking him what he was saying. I wasn't asking him to project what the eventual result would be. I wasn't sure if he was saying that the commercial uses would be prohibited, or is it just a possibility, the way you're explaining it?
It could go either way.
What the engineer has said is, you may have another avenue to address the parking situation if the variance is granted.
I see. The gentleman here stated that most people are working from home and whatnot, and there's not going to be a lot of people there. Fair, it's possible. There's also these hypothetical situations that we can discuss all night. But they currently use about five spaces, so if they have seven, what if they had one space per office upstairs, five for the lower floor? They have seven spaces. They get to move forward with. They get to move forward with their building. We're happy, they're happy. Lights off by eight. I feel like it's a good middle ground. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward, make any comments or statements regarding this application? Please do so. If not, I'd like to have a motion to close to the public. Mike, thank you.
Second.
Wait. You do this all the time.
Right until the last minute.
Hi, Elizabeth Savino, 17, Terry Lane. I just wanted to say that, you know, yes, Samso, you have always been, Mr. Samso, you have always been very kind to our neighborhood. You know, it's nothing against, it's nothing personally against you or you succeeding in your ventures. You know, I wish you all the best of luck. It's just the potential people that would be parking on our street. Currently, as my neighbor Jeremy has stated, we are a very quaint, quiet street. It's a no-outlet street, so it's Terry Lane. You have to go down Terry Lane through Meyer, through Janey to get back out. You don't have to, but typically that's what you do. Right now, everyone who goes down these streets have a reason to be there. They live there, they have family members that live there. They're all very cautious about how fast they're driving regardless as to other testimonies. Everyone is very cautious as to how fast and where they're going on Terry Lane. When there are people that park on our street that don't belong there and that don't really care about the neighborhood, that becomes a problem and that becomes a source of concern for us people that do live there and have kids that play in the neighborhood. And they don't play on sidewalks because we don't have sidewalks. They play in the street because that's the only place really they have to gather. So that is a big source of concern. That's basically it. And also, in today's economy, you know, we have people that have adult children living in our homes with us. And, you know, it's not just a two-family car home, it's multiple cars. So there's multiple cars per home that are parking either on the driveways that we all have and on the street. And for the most part, you know, we all basically respect each other's spaces. We don't park in front of our neighbors' houses because we know that those spots are accounted for. And there will be people coming onto our block potentially who really won't care, you know, where they park because, hey, it's not their neighborhood. So that's really the source of concern that we have, or at least I could say that I have. But, you know, nothing against you, you know, and your prosperity and your business. It's just our neighborhood and our kids and the congestion that's already there. That's all I wanted to say.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening.
William Hopkins, 14, Terry Lane. I just wanted to mention one other thing. There are currently two homes that are not vacated by anyone. They just got sold. So with that, and one of them is the new bigger type of building, I'm sure there's going to be two or three more cars. Same thing with the other house. So just in those numbers that, you know, I know everyone's doing their job properly. There's going to be another five cars on the block. Maybe not during that time, but not everyone goes to work at those times. So there will be additional cars on the block. And just another idea, because I don't, I want you to succeed in the neighborhood. I don't want to, this is America, you should pursue, and you're doing a great job. There's a lot in the back, and I was wondering if there's any possibility that maybe you could acquire a couple of spots like for overfill, you know, where the karate school is behind that, this commercial lot there? If there was any possibility of that? Because I think, as you see, everyone's just worried about their kids. I have two small kids. I have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old. My four-year-old's autistic. I would hate for him to run out in the street one day and he gets hit by a car. Getting a little emotional, ridiculous, but anyway. I hope, I wish you well. I'm not trying to stop anything like that. We're just worried and we just want you to understand that. And I just hope that, you know, it would be great if we could just put a block there and everybody just park in the lot. But like you know, you can't go across rare and in the park. So maybe if there's something you could work out with the karate school, get a couple of spots there, you know, just as another option. I don't want to tell you how to run your business, just as another idea. But that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to come forward, ask any, make any statements? If not, I'd like a motion to close this. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Lance. Just have a question for you, Ms. Samso. Any consideration of just not putting the second story on?
Not putting a second story on would not help me increase my building value or the streetscape of Raritan Road, which has been drastically changing over the years with all the new developments happening in town. The building, basically the way it was, it was a complete eyesore before, overgrown with trees and bushes and not maintained for many years. Just cleaning it up the way I did, I believe I did a great justice and can do a great more justice to the way the building will look and correspond with the rest of the way the Raritan Road is going. And keep in mind, we're in a commercial neighborhood surrounded by commercial buildings there. Every way around the residential streets is all commercial. Industrial behind us as well, all the way up to Barnes and Nobles and to the buildings behind the karate studio, there's a ton of industrial businesses back there as well. I'm just trying to make it look better. I'm trying to make a neighborhood better. I'm trying to keep everybody happy. I'm the guy that walks around and cleans up Raritan Road multiple times a week with all the garbage from the bus stops and things to that nature. That's all. I mean, that saying, I really need the building to help my value from what I bought it from to what it can become and to help employ some other people upstairs that need small office space. Trust me, I'm not looking for nothing big up there. I'm looking for something very modest. I don't want to hear a million people running on top of me.
Okay. I guess you'd like to make your closing statement there?
Can I? Wait. Yeah.
Was there any consideration to put one office with some type of internal stairwell? So we're limiting parking, we're limiting size of the building, we're limiting the stairwell, we're achieving what you want architecturally, which I think you should, and you're also getting your added space?
What I can do is enclose the outside stairwell and make it inside.
That's not the main concern. We're trying to, I don't mind going up. I don't know who's going to rent two of those offices that you have set up that way. It doesn't look like they can be combined either as one, one. It looks like they're completely two.
Correct.
So now, for the sake of you having two empty offices that aren't being used because they're small and there's no parking, you know, maybe we put one, we solve some of the parking issues, we make it nice where when you walk in your front door, somehow you figure out a stairwell going up?
The problem with anything being rearranged in my main office would cost me immensely because of the layout the way it is, and it would be financially and to the operating. I could never operate for the whole time of construction. The cost to redesign the entire inside of the building to go up would cost me an absolute fortune. And by that time, I might as well just forget the building and rent it out to somebody else.
Don't you think you could achieve what you want architecturally and increase your space without the additional offices?
Up top?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Why?
It doesn't make sense on a financial basis. It doesn't make sense on a business basis that if I'm just going to put a little piece to the left of me and have no added income upstairs or create a nicer streetscape for Raritan Road, makes absolutely zero sense. In that case, I might as well just, as I said, rent the building to somebody else and move my location. Because it doesn't make any sense. I didn't buy the building with that in mind. I bought the building with a vision in mind to make it look nicer, to have some extra added income, which everybody desires in today's world, right?
You also bought the building with five spots.
Yep. That's what variances are for.
Okay.
Mr. Bonner, looking at the plans, I mean, is there a possibility to put another parking spot in front of parking spot number five behind the building? Granted, one will block in the other one, but according to this, you have two different types of tenants. You're going to have the full-time tenant, and you're going to have the transient who's going, or visitors. And with that possibility, at least you'd get an extra parking spot out of it. I don't know what that would do to impervious coverage or if that'd be another possibility. First page. I'm trying to get there. Oh. All right, so which space are you talking about?
Parking spot number five. So that's the furthest one from Raritan at the end of Terry.
Yes, I think it could. If I recall, at the DRC, the idea was not to put the parking too close to the adjacent residents and to put more landscaping in there to preserve, you know, to screen the parking. Or if what you're talking about is like a tandem spot?
It would be a tandem spot.
A tandem spot. I think that is feasible.
And like I said, you're going to have two different types of visitors. You're going to have the full-time permanent people who are going to be there often, and then you're going to have the transient who are going to be there for 15 minutes, drop off a form, pick something up, and leave. And that will at least take one of the long-term people and give them an opportunity or another place to park.
I think that's feasible, yeah. If you want to add a condition of approval to explore that possibility, and if possible, the applicant would put an additional parking space, tandem parking space, adjacent to the second-floor walkway? I mean theoretically, you might be able to get two more in there.
I don't know if you want to go that far, but, you know.
Well, if there are people coming in for the day and they work together, I don't know if that impacts the dumpster, though. Jim, you brought up a good question. The public seems very interested in keeping parking within the confines of the property. We have, I guess, pushed and proposed for this streetscape or trees along the back of the building and a fence. If those trees were eliminated, how many more parking spots could we get onsite?
It's narrow. It's not only seven feet to the.
Well, one to the left, but then also one adjacent to spot five of them. Let's take it, right?
I'm going to use the cursor up here. Are you talking about here? I think what Mr. Ulrich was talking about was adding a spot in here.
Yes.
What I said is potentially you could get a second tandem spot. If you're talking about people sharing an office, say Mr. Samso and his office manager, they both know they're going to be there for the day, they could utilize those spaces without impacting each other. What you're talking about is additional spaces, tandem spaces along here where the trees are?
Yes.
I think that would require additional variances because you'd be paving too close to a property line. I think there's a 25-foot requirement.
It looks like you only have eight feet anyway, you know, and that eats into parking spot five, so it looks like you probably only have about seven feet there.
Yeah.
And then I guess the same thing to the left of the building, which would be facing the karate school. That's 10 feet wide. That wouldn't fit one more spot right there?
Well, if, I'm assuming there's a fence and then the wall, might be difficult opening car doors. Can I ask for a couple of minutes to talk to my client?
It's early.
Sure. The applicant is willing to add the tandem space. If two can go in there, he'd be willing to do that too, but whatever works, and we work with Mr. O'Connor on setting that up, but I don't think it's in anybody's interest to remove that landscaping, especially in light of what, you know, the adjacent property owners said in terms of screening and things like that. The other thing he's willing to do is if, you had mentioned having a single office space upstairs, that doesn't, we talked, I talked to Mr. Klein, it doesn't change the parking calculation at all. It would be the same amount of square footage. Oh. Yeah. No, I don't, he's not, I don't think he's willing to do that.
I was okay with going up, which is helpful to accommodate one stairwell.
Right. Yeah. That would have been a non-variance application, and he's already put a great deal of time and money into this application. You might have just answered my next question. There's been great concern by the residents. They do have respect for what you've done in the neighborhood, but there's still a great concern. Would you want to consider reevaluating what you've been here?
still a great concern. Would you want to consider reevaluating what you've been hearing here and consider reevaluating your design before we take a vote and come back at a later date?
In terms, redesigning it in terms of what? The look? The exterior design of the building or the size?
Yes. Coming to more conformance with the number of parking spots that you could provide, be reducing the footprint, redoing landscaping, looking for alternative locations, adjacent sites that you might be able to lease spots from.
He does not want to reduce the size of the building. He's already reduced it once from his initial plan. He's willing to add the tandem space, possibly a second. That would bring him to eight or nine on-site spaces, and he'd be willing to talk to the adjacent property owner, the karate owner, about leasing some spaces.
I have one more comment. So if you're going to do the tandem spots in the back, can you put the dumpster on the other side of the building between the karate school and your building? This way, it takes it away from the residents, and it's also in a place that it could be easily accessible by the garbage company. And, you know, we could come up with a time and, you know, like you have now, what is it, 6:30 you said? Okay, so, and continue to do it after 6:30. So you have the dumpster on that side, and they'll only pick it up still after 6:30, and it moves it away from the residents.
He's willing to do that, move the dumpster? So potentially, he's up to nine on-site spaces and looking at leasing spaces. If he can get four spaces, he would be in compliance.
He'd be closer.
No, he'd be in compliance. He needs 13.
I don't know if we can take that you'll be looking to do that without coming before us with an agreement in place already.
As a condition of...
Do you think, Mr. Bonner, you would come back next month with revised plans so the board and the public can see exactly where the location of the parking spaces will be, the location of the dumpster, the location of the trees and the fence? In this way, we all have a clear picture. I'm not suggesting to reopen the entire case, just to have an opportunity to present that, to make sure that you're accurately representing on the plan what's been discussed tonight.
He's willing to carry for a month.
Okay, so...
If I find more other parking spots off-site with one of these burning buildings...
Yes.
...around the road, we'll be okay with that.
Get an agreement. Get a lease or a license agreement that your neighbor or wherever it is will provide whatever number of spaces.
That's not a problem. I can do that.
Well, don't commit to it. Come back next month with the submission.
And I believe that's also showing the two additional, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes, that's not in lieu of, that's...
The counselor pointed out, I guess, a slight planned revision.
The objective is between tandem spaces or no tandem spaces and license agreements, having 13 spaces accounted for, whether the tandem spaces are used or not. I think he'd prefer not to take out any landscaping, obviously. So if he can manage to license an additional six spaces somewhere, that would be 13.
Alleviate the residents' concern that would make everybody happy.
Right. And there would be no, there would be no new variance. It would be continuation of two existing variances which aren't being changed or exacerbated.
All would look good and the eyes here.
All right, so we're carrying for a month?
Yes. This application is not complete, the application, the submission of the application is completed. You've rested. The board has asked you to come back with revised plans, and that would be the subject of the next...
With limited testimony on the changes to the plan?
On the changes, correct. The whole...
Mr. Klein or Mr. Graviano.
Right. The whole case is not being reopened just to the changes that are made to the plan, so we can see it physically. There will be no further notice given. So this notice tonight is notice to the members of the public and anyone else that this matter is being continued to the April, what's the April meeting? The April 6 meeting at 7:30 PM. Okay? So you will not get any further notice. You're a notice now that this is being continued until April 6 at 7:30 PM.
Can we do it by Zoom? I'm supposed to be in North Carolina. It's a joke, Mr. Cruz.
I have no sense of humor, so...
And I guess one other thing with the terms of the, you know, parking agreement with whoever it is, you know, what the length of that is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be part of it.
How long you got here?
Sublease is... Soon as he expires, when he gets his CO.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next month.
Did you get, Angelina, you got your...
Yeah, I got it.
You just want to rent chairs to them, that's all. You just want to rent chairs to them.
View of the 2023 master plan reexamination. Paul, are you ready? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Paul, Ricky, given the lateness of the evening, I think I can be brief. First matter is the master plan reexamination report. It's entitled, it's dated February 17, 2023. The report was really prepared for, can everyone, I'm going to shut the door here. The report is dated February 17, 2023. It serves two fundamental purposes. First, the township has to evaluate its master plan every 10 years. The last master plan was prepared in 2013. So this reexamination will address the township's 10-year statutory requirement. I also mentioned last time that we met that the township has been working to update its zoning ordinance. A lot of the changes partake to the fact that it hasn't been looked at and updated in a number of years. Because the master plan has additional requirements, then, you know, just meeting the township's initial needs, we evaluated and updated multiple sections in the document. And I mentioned some of this last time, but the three major issues that were raised in the master plan in 2013 were the gypsum site, where Clark Commons is now, the downtown, and also Terminal App. So I think we talked about this a little bit last time, but all those areas have improved significantly since 2013, right? L'Oreal, with the development there. You have activity occurring along Westfield Avenue. Some of that we're going to be discussing later, and there's multiple products occurring. And also, clearly, the Clark Commons has been a very successful development for the township. So the master plan updates that as well. And then, there's a number of new state laws and the like that have occurred that the master plan updates, so that's in the plan, also upgrades what the township has done regarding affordable housing. Regarding policies, last time I asked the board, there's no potential, there's no changes that are recommended in the master plan to its long-range policies and objectives. You're a built-out community. So the plan is clear regarding the work that the township has been undertaking regarding overhauling the ordinances and the appropriateness of that. And that was one of the main functions why the township wanted to undertake and have this document prepared, in addition to meeting its 10-year legal requirement. This evening, Mr. O'Connor reminded me that as part of this, the township's also updating its zoning map. And I reviewed some language from the individual that was drafting the zoning map. And I could reconcile, just by sitting there tonight, you know, nine out of 10 of his questions. One of the issues that were raised was that, over time in the town, a lot of the zone lines were crafted around by way of example, commercial property. And that commercial property, over time, may have expanded through use variance by way of example, by one property or such. So that creates, or created in certain situations, a split zoning situation where the commercial line may run through the front of the property. While the property is still commercial, it's still zoned residential. And also, the draftsman, or I'm not sure the person's exact position, indicated through actual lot consolidation, where multiple lots were consolidated to one, that it created that situation. So if the board sees favorable, there isn't mention of that in the master plan in terms of changes to the zoning regulations, but I think there should be a statement, and this is something that you could do as a minor change tonight, if you see fit, and I could just add it to the document, that regarding split zoning, something to the effect, the township should evaluate the zoning map to eliminate such situations, would it would result in creating a conforming situation for the existing land use, and particularly when it occurred by way of use variance, where the zoning board found that the property was particularly well-suited for that, for that use, if that makes sense. That's my best at a quick version. I can be quiet, but I can assure you it meets the statutory requirements under the law, and it updates and makes, this document would update and make the township's master plan legal for 10 years. You can reexamine it more often than that. This is meant to be more of a quicker brush review than an extensive review, though.
The statement you're referring to for zoning, that's just for these properties that have been combined, lots have been combined over time and may have crossed into different zones that clean that mess up?
That's what was described to me, and that's what I would write into any change, that it would be either through the creation through maybe a use variance, where essentially it rezoned the property, in a manner of speaking, already for that use, and then through lot consolidation. So it's really just really cleaning up to make the zone lines more neatly around what's really the existing land use there today.
But it wouldn't be changing any of our current zoning increasing height restrictions or anything like that, or?
It would be a map change only in that regard. So if it was in a residential, a commercial zone, or if the back portion was in a residential zone, and now it was in the commercial zone because of that change, whatever the commercial zone height, it would be reflected for that, for that piece of property. It would take on those, the characteristics of a new zone.
But the commercial zones that we have now that aren't being changed, there'd be no impact on those? Like the L'Oreal development, there'd be no, nothing changed with that?
No, and I'm envisioning this as, these are real small little tweaks around the map, not anything substantial.
That should be added in.
Okay.
Would we get an opportunity to see the map beforehand, or?
The map is being prepared by Mr. O'Connor. That's traditionally adopted as part of a zoning ordinance change, but I'm sure that could be shared, and those changes could be viewed.
General, I review this. It's a nicely prepared document, thank you. And you're recommending that nothing really be changed?
From a policy perspective, yes. This is, this is, from a planning perspective, this was a little bit of a book report.
Yeah, I mean, you've added in requirements that have occurred for state statute, like the electric vehicle.
Yes.
Infrastructure. But no master plan amendments are recommended, following development regulations amended, recommended. I think this is well-done, and I think we could take a, I would vote yes on this. Any other discussion on this?
No, it's well-done and well-written. I would second that.
Mr. Chair, there is a resolution before you.
Sorry, what was that?
There is a resolution before you, so it's a formal action you have to take.
Yes.
As the planning board. And consistent with Mr. Ricky's testimony on that resolution, in the seventh whereas clause, it identifies his plan being dated February 16, 2023. Consistent with what he just discussed, that clause will be revised to state dated February 16, 2023, updated March 2, 2023, just to reflect that there is an update that was made tonight at the board meeting. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Ricky?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll cover, you'll change the cover page, and you'll put in the additional text in the appropriate place.
Does that change the resolution, then, or?
No, no, yes, it will change the resolution, but if that's acceptable to you and to the board tomorrow, I'll send the clerk a revised resolution with updated through March 2, 2023.
But we can vote on it tonight?
Yes.
All right. So has everyone seen the resolution and read it? It's going to be slightly changed. Any questions regarding the resolution? Okay, seeing none. Any other further discussion? I'd like a motion to adopt it. Motion to adopt, ordinance adopting redevelopment plan?
Second.
Triola and Altman?
By Mike Altman. You second it?
I second it.
Van seconded it. Roll call.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cle?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
Paul, you got to win tonight. You got to win.
I'm...
You got to win, compared to the last, last group.
Yeah, that's for sure.
All right. At this point, I'd like to have...
Procedurally, you have to open the master plan. It's not just the presentation, it's a public hearing. So I screwed up. I should have pointed out to you that before you voted, you should have opened it to the public. So just do it now, so it's, the record is complete.
All right. If anyone, I'd like a motion from the board to open this up to the public to have any discussion on the 2023 master plan reexamination report.
Motion.
Testimony that...
Second.
A motion second, roll call. Was that a, a roll call? No. Everyone in favor? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Seeing nobody coming forward from the public, I'd like a motion to close.
Okay.
Nate and Mike, thank you. Now, we have a, well, let's do a motion again to adopt the resolution adopting the 2023 examination report. We have a, well, let's do a motion again to adopt the resolution adopting the 2023 examination report. It was made by Mike and seconded by Lance. Roll call vote on that? We didn't do it, did we?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cle?
Yes.
At this point, I'd like a motion to open the meetings of the public to have any discussions they may wish to bring before the board. You have a motion?
Wait, 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 we have to do the consistency review.
What consistency review?
For block 91 lots. That's, that was actually before the, um, master plan reexamination on the.
Oh.
It's number six.
Yeah, I, I wasn't fully aware of that. I had, I thought it was the redevelopment site, but I, I can address it though.
No, no, this is just the, the consistency review for the redevelopment plan.
Let me just give you a little background.
It's late, we're tired.
This matter has been before you. It was the subject of a preliminary investigation report. You recommended that 2733 Westfield Avenue and 26 Washington Street be declared an area in need of redevelopment. That's the first step in the process. The second step in the process is the town adopting a redevelopment plan, which is a mini zoning ordinance for that property. Last month, the Township Council introduced an ordinance adopting the redevelopment plan. Because it's like a mini ordinance and because the local redevelopment and housing law requires it, once the council introduces that ordinance, it's referred to the planning board, like any other zoning office ordinance, for a, a substantial consistency review. So basically, your task is to make a determination that the redevelopment plan is consistent, substantially consistent with the master plan, and that's what Mr. Ricky was going to address.
Uh, in, in, in that regard too, because it's a redevelopment scenario, the law specifically says to, that the board has to indicate any inconsistencies as well. So as I just reviewed, all the way back to the 2003 master plan, 2013, and, and just currently prepared the master plan, it's, it's my opinion that the proposed redevelopment plan was really designed to effectuate redevelopment along the corridor. In terms of the existing heights that are out there, there is an additional story, however, from three to four stories, however, in certain situations, the DTV district, from a zoning perspective, already allows four stories under certain instances and setbacks. So in some form or the other, that height is anticipated under the zoning ordinance. The master plan does not have those, that level of detail. However, it, it's my opinion that there are no inconsistencies with the township's master plan as proposed in the redevelopment plan today. I'm just pointing out factually how there is, the redevelopment plan does allow for more intensity than the underlying district today. Uh, in terms of density and height, in one story, in terms of, of how it relates to setbacks. In the D, in the DTV, there, today, there needs to be greater setbacks to have four stories, but it envisions four stories. That's the distinction.
They came before us, or it was originally proposed to include Lot 37, which the family members came forward and were concerned about their elderly mother. The town has acknowledged the four lots, but they have indicated that they've removed that lot from consideration in this plan going forward.
I believe the, the board moved forward with four lots. I believe the, the council determined not to include the fourth lot as part of their finding in creating the actual district.
That's correct.
The district consists of three lots, not four, and the plan reflects those three lots.
And there are, those three lots are already controlled by the same individual, I believe?
Yes.
Can Lot 37 be put into it, or that it's out now for good?
It's out for good right now. It's more of a legal question now, this board found that it met the criteria, the council did not include it, so.
All right, has everyone had a chance? Well, do you have any questions, Mr. Ricky, regarding what he's just discussed? None, has anyone had a chance to review the resolution?
Yes.
Any questions, comments on it? Okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
Although it's not required, just open it to the public, just for consistency.
At this point, I'd like to have, open to the public any discussions they may have in this resolution or the comments that Mr. Ricky made? Have a motion?
Second.
Mike, and thank you. Lance, any from the public wishing to come forward and discuss this matter, please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to have a motion to close it to the public. Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Nate. Lance and Nate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, I'd like a motion to adopt, no?
We have to do roll call for that, yes?
Just opening and closing to the public?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I can't hear you from here, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So like, a motion to adopt the resolution determining ordinance adopting redevelopment plan for 2733 Westfield Avenue and 26 Washington Street, substantially consistent with the master plan.
Motion.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Lance. Roll call vote.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola? Mr. Altman? Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cle?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Resolution passed.
At this point, I'd like a motion to open the meeting to the public for any discussion they may have. Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Mike. No, Nate. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward to discuss any matter with the planning board, please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion.
Thank you. Lance, thank you, Mike. It's closed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any new business to discuss? Any old business to discuss? Our next meeting is April 6th, May 4th, and then June 1st. At this point, I'd like a motion to close. Adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Lance, all in favor?
Aye.